In Jesus' name we pray. Father, we plead the blood of Jesus. Let's all bow our knees. Everybody bow your knees. We're going to kneel down now. We are in the presence of God. Let's all kneel down. Father, we thank you for our meeting today. Let the blood of Jesus wash us clean. From anything that can hinder our prayers, in Jesus' name. Whatsoever can hinder our prayers from being answered today. Father, wash them away, in Jesus' name. Every prayer, we are going to pray your presence today. Father, perform them to your glory, in Jesus' name. Thank you, our Father. Without you, we can do nothing. Be with us in this prayer meeting and achieve for us everything we want to achieve, in Jesus' name. Be with us in this prayer meeting. And achieve for us what we want to achieve, in Jesus' name. Thank you, holy Father. In Jesus' name, we have prayed. Amen. Amen. Let somebody pray a prayer of thanksgiving. Still on your knees? Don't stand up yet. Somebody pray a prayer of thanksgiving. Okay, somebody at Bungalo Assembly, pray a prayer of thanksgiving.
Father in Jesus' name, King of glory, Lord of lords, we thank you, we bless your name this day. We appreciate you, Lord, for being with us, for not allowing us to be alone these days. Glory, honor, adoration be unto your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Lord, for the grace of God, that makes us to be alive, seeing the beauty of today, counted among the living souls. Father, be glorified, in Jesus' name. Mighty Father, we want to thank you for your church, the triumphant church of Jesus Christ. Thank you for keeping this church. Thank you for preserving the church. Thank you, Father, for not allowing the enemy to leap up for joy over this church of God in any way. Glory, honor, adoration be unto your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Father, for every member of the triumphant church of Jesus Christ. Thank you for holding us in your own will. Thank you, Jehovah God, for not allowing the church to stand a second for any torments in this church of God in any day. Glory, honor, adoration be unto your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you, mighty God, for expanding your church, both home and abroad. Thank you, Father Lord, in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Father.
Thank you for today's Sunday service, the first Sunday of his kind, this month of October. Father, we thank you for bringing us to your presence again, to learn of you, to pray to your name, to give you praises, to give you all adoration for all that you have done for us in this church of God. Father, glory, honor, adoration be unto your name, in Jesus' name. Mighty Father, we want to thank you for your word of life, your word of salvation, your word of the kingdom of God, word of repentance, word of rebuke, word of correction, that you have been sending unto us in this church of God every Sunday. Or whenever we read your word, Father, we say thank you for this, in Jesus' name. Mighty Father, we want to thank you for the general overseer of this ministry.
Go on.
Mighty Father, we want to thank you for the general overseer of this ministry. Thank you, Father Lord, for holding him. Thank you, Father Lord, for your anointing upon him. Thank you, Father Lord, for using him to build up your church. Glory, honor, adoration be unto your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you, mighty Father. Glory, honor, adoration be unto your name, oh Lord. In Jesus' mighty name, we have given thanks.
Amen. Hallelujah. Why were you not saying aloud, amen? Don't stand up. Why are you in a hurry? Go back on your knees, please.
Why are we in a hurry?
Why are you in a hurry to stand up? I've not said stand up. I'm still on my knees. Somebody at Abekoko Assembly, pray a prayer of thanksgiving.
Father in Jesus' name.
Let somebody interpret at the same time.
Father, we bless your name. We give you praise and glory for this day. Father, we bless your name. We give you praise and glory for this very day. Seize of October 2024. Father, we adore you for your protection over us. Every family and every member of the Travan Church. From January up to this month of October. You have been showing us mercy. Reveal your name in Jesus' name. Every family washing over us. Fighting our battles for us. Father, we bless your name for the Travan Church. All the things you have been doing in our midst. All the things you have been doing in our lives. All the things you have been doing in every family in the Travan Church.
Thank you, Father.
In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Father, we appreciate you for your word. Thank you, Father.
Where is that echo?
Thank you, Father. For revealing your counsel on such a time. So that we can inherit your kingdom at the hand. Blessed be your name for this, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Father, for your servants. To your call to oversee this work of the Lord. Thank you for giving him orders and unctions. On his kingdom upon him. Thank you for giving him orders and unctions. To declare your counsel unto us. Blessed be your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you for all your provision from this ministry. From all your provision for this ministry. Since our insertion up to this moment. Blessed be your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Father, for every source you have saved for the Travan Church of Jesus Christ in Nifok.
Thank you, Father.
In Nigeria. Blessed be your name, our Father. All the sources you have saved across the sea, through the Travan Church. Blessed be your name, our Father. Thank you for giving us continuous victory over all our enemies as a church. Over all our enemies as individuals. Father, we bless you for not allowing the enemies to rejoice over us. Blessed be your name, in Jesus' name. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. For the progress and prosperity of this work of the Lord. Blessed be your name, our Father. Father, we cannot thank you enough for great things you have done for us. To thank you, our Father. Blessed be your name, our Father. In Jesus' name, we give thanks.
Amen. Hallelujah. Amen.
Amen.
Somebody at Bungalo Assembly, pray thanksgiving in Yoruba language. Because the prayer was not interpreted, so we have to pray in Yoruba language there. Bungalo now. Somebody pray thanksgiving in Yoruba language.
No Yoruba person in the church, sir?
I didn't say Yoruba person. I said in Yoruba language. I didn't say Yoruba person. Why must it be a Yoruba person? Okay, you are saying there is nobody to benefit. Is that what you are saying? What about the Yoruba people among you? Did you drive them away? What happened? Okay, nobody who understands Yoruba among you there. Sister Pat. Amen. Amen. Let's go to Alaja Assembly. Somebody pray a prayer of thanksgiving. If you don't want to pray twice, you have to make sure it's interpreted. Alaja Assembly now. What are the challenges? Your mic is still off. You have to unmute your mic. You should have been getting ready. You know you'll be the next one. The person praying must be on the heels, on his or her heels. I'll be microphone, you know what she said. What's the problem? If I am, what's the problem you have? The person praying must kneel down. We are all kneeling down. Okay. Hold on, please. Okay, go on now. Kneeling down. Hallelujah. Shout hallelujah.
Shout hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Somebody give thanks in English at Alaja Assembly. I gave you the choice to interpret and do it once, so since you chose separately, you have to pray for thanksgiving. I mean pray the thanksgiving prayer in English. Where is your camera going here, Waya?
Father in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Lord.
Father in Jesus' name. Our Lord and our Father, we bless your holy name. We give you praise, we give you honor, we give you adoration. You are Lord and there is none like you. Thank you, Daddy, for the privilege you have given to us, to be counted among the living today. Thank you for your mercy upon our lives, as individuals, as families, and as a church. I thank you for your grace upon this ministry. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for counting us worthy to be amongst, to be alive today. Thank you for making, thank you for making us worthy to be called children of God. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for giving us the grace to gather here today and to fellowship with you. Be thou exalted in Jesus' name. Thank you, Daddy, for the way in which you have been manifesting your presence in this church. Blessed be your holy name. Blessed be your holy name. Thank you, Daddy, because you have been with us. Thank you because you never leave us. Thank you for your mercy. Thank you for your love. Thank you for your grace. Thank you, Lord. Thank you, mighty Jehovah. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you for this church of God. Thank you for the ministry that you continue to allow to move forward. Blessed be your name. Thank you for the word of life that you send to us at all times. Thank you for keeping us. Thank you for your protection upon us, as individuals, as family. And thank you for this church. Thank you for making us to move forward. Thank you for your blessing on this church. Thank you for your grace upon this church. Blessed be your name, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. In Jesus' name, we have given thanks.
In Jesus' name, we give thanks. Shout hallelujah. Still on your knees. Shout hallelujah. Shout hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah.
Shout hallelujah. Shout hallelujah. Clap your hands for Jesus. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Hallelujah, amen.
We can stand up now. Thank you, Father. Amen. Now, the first prayer we are going to pray. You are going to say, "Every weapon of the enemy against my life to steal, to keep, to destroy, to cause sickness or disease in my body, I command them to perish, in Jesus' name." Let us pray.
Let us pray.
Please vocalize your prayer. Who is this? Uh, my little girl sitting down. Why are you sitting down, little girl? Ah, thank you. Thank you for standing up. We have to be militant. We have to be militant.
Of the enemy against my life, to cause sickness. Peace or accident be destroyed, in Jesus' mighty name.
Vocalize your prayer. I know God answers silent prayer. But when we come together to pray like this, it is not silent prayer. It has to be vocalized. That was the way the apostles prayed, when they were praying corporate prayer. They lift up their, they lifted up their voices. Ah, so, but when you are praying alone and you want to pray loud, you want to pray silently, that's okay. But when we are praying corporate prayer and we did not announce pray silently, you have to lift up your voice. So let's lift up our voices as we are praying. Every council of the enemy against my life to steal, to keep, to destroy, I command them to perish, in Jesus' name. Let us pray. Lift up your voice in prayer. Don't pray silently.
Against my life, to steal, to keep, or destroy, be destroyed, in Jesus' name.
Tell people in your congregation to lift up their voices. Tell them in Bungalo, tell them at Alaja, the pastors and coordinators there, tell them, tell them. Go to them. Anybody praying silently, and tell them to lift up their voices. And you should stand up if you are not, or if you are not above seventy. If you are above seventy, I permit whatever you like. When you want to stand, stand. When you want to stand, stand, or you want to sit, sit. For the rest of us, there's no reason why you cannot stand up. But when you are tired, you can sit down too. When you can also stand up again, rest a bit and stand up again.
To steal, to keep, to destroy my life, my pathways, that's my children, my siblings, where I am be destroyed in the name of Jesus.
In Jesus' name, we pray. Can I hear a good amen from you? Now let's open our bibles. Acts chapter four. You can sit down to read the Bible, but after that, we'll stand up again. You know me, I'm not even sitting down since. So I'm not cheating you. Acts four. Verse twenty-three. I will read the English, then somebody read the Yoruba. "And being let go, they went to their own companions." This is the New King James Version. "And reported all that the chief priest and elder said to them." Verse twenty-four. "So when they heard that, they raised their voices to God with one accord and said, 'Lord, you are God, who made heaven and earth, and the sea, and all that is in them.'" So can you see now, they raised their voices. Because that's corporate praying. Corporate praying. They raised their voices.
Is it not there in your Bible?
Twenty-four here, Amika, near NLT. Verse twenty-four. Acts four, twenty-four. Have you seen it?
Um, one minute, sir.
Okay.
Acts one, chapter twenty-four.
Acts one, chapter twenty-four, N L T. "Then they prayed, 'O Lord, you know every act. Show these men you have chosen.'" Acts one, chapter twenty-four.
No, Acts four. Acts four, twenty-four.
Acts chapter four, verse twenty-four. Okay, thank you. "And when they heard the reports, all the believers lifted their voices together in prayer to God."
Can you hear that?
"O sovereign Lord..."
Hold on please. They did what? Don't go yet. They did what?
They lifted their voices.
Ah ha, they lifted their voices. Corporate prayer, you have to lift your voice up. It's not silent prayer. Now complete that verse.
"O, o sovereign Lord, creator of heaven and earth, the sea and everything in them."
Okay, thank you. I, I got that. Thank you. You can sit down. That's just, that's N L T, is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, uh, verse twenty-five. "Who by the mouth of your servant David have said, 'Why did the heeding rage and the people imagine vain things?'" Okay, if I share the screen now, because, uh, uh, many of us, it's going to be too small. Okay, can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Ah, okay, you can still see it.
We can.
Why? "Who by the mouth of your servant David said, 'Why did the heeding rage and people imagine vain things?'" Verse twenty-six. "The kings of the earth took their stand, and the rulers were gathered together against the Lord and against his Christ." Atisikristi re. "For truly against your holy servant Jesus, whom you anointed, both herod and Pontius Pilate, with the Gentiles and the people of Israel, were gathered..." I mean, excuse me, "were gathered together," okay, that's correct. "...to do whatever your hand and your purpose determine before to be done." "Now, Lord, look on their threats and grant to your servants, that with all boldness they may speak your word." "By stretching out your hand to heal, and that signs and wonders may be done through the name of your holy servant Jesus." "And when they had prayed, the place where they were assembled together was shaking, and they were all filled with the Holy Spirit, and they spoke the word of God with boldness." Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
So you can see that they raised their voice to God. That's corporate prayer. I'm just showing you that, it's not that you just stay somewhere and be moving, only your lips are just moving. We don't even know what you are saying. Now, this, the prayer is not secret. Adra tank, but when I say pray like this, it is an announced prayer. So it's not, when you are praying your secret prayer, for goodness sake, I don't need to hear. But now, I have called what we all should pray about. So we are praying the same thing. Ah ha, so vocalize that prayer. There's something about vocalizing your prayer. It makes your heart involved. When you don't raise your voice, sometimes you just sit down there. You're just moving your mouth, your valence, you sleep off. Your mind will go to Yawningari, your mind will go to Yalamala. But when you vocalize, it helps you more to be involved. Are you getting my point?
Yes, sir.
So, again, it is the pattern of the prayer. Let your, I know, I'm not saying the flesh now. I'm saying let your body, your spirit, soul and body be involved. You know, the flesh is not the same as the body. How many of us know that? The flesh and the body, they are not the same. You need to know how to, when so, pray, spirit, soul and body. I'm not saying flesh. Flesh cannot pray. We don't need flesh. So, but let your spirit, soul and body be involved. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
You remember that song, "Praise the Lord, my spirit is soul and body," huh? You remember it? "Praise the Lord, my spirit is soul and body, praise the Lord, my spirit is soul and body, shout hallelujah." So pray also with your spirit, soul and body. Amen? Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
All right. Uh, I'm going to say we stand up again. I'm not cheating you. I'm still standing. I've not sat down. And, uh, even though I'm not seventy years, but I'm gradually approaching it. Getting closer to it, so I'm not cheating you. If I say stand up. If you are above seventy, do what you like. Sit when you like, stand when you like. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Now, we are going to go back to that prayer. This prayer is, uh, a response to revelation. I didn't plan prayer, but because of some revelations, that's why we have to have this prayer. Last week's prayer was a prayer according to plan. You know, that's the plan. According to plan of the church, plan of our programs. But today's prayer is not according to plan. It's according to revelation. It's a response to revelation. So let's pray it very well. So we are going to go back to that prayer point. "Every weapon of Satan formed against my body" "be consumed by fire." Let us pray, everybody. "Every weapon of Satan formed against my body to cause sickness, to cause disease." "In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ." "Be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire." "Every weapon of witchcraft." "Every weapon of witches and wizards." "Every weapon of Satan in any way." "Formed against my body." "To cause sickness, to cause disease." "I command you to be consumed by fire." "In the name of the Lord Jesus." Pray, pray, pray.
Vocalize your prayer.
Your prayer is not a secret prayer. We are praying the same thing. Lift up your voice. "Kalibo, every weapon of Satan formed against me to cause sickness or disease in my body." "From the heads of my head to the soles of my feet." "Be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire." "In the name of Jesus." "In Jesus' name we pray." "In Jesus' name we pray." Hallelujah.
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 The bible speaks of God as he who burns the chariots in fire. He burns the chariots of the enemy in fire. Now whatever is written in the bible is not written for writing's sake. It's written so that we can, it can be a blessing to us. It's written so that we can know Okay, please open your bible. To Psalms forty-six. Verse nine. "He makes," I think we read it last week, "he makes wars cease to the end of the earth. He breaks the bow and cuts the spire in two. He burns the chariot in, in the fire." The Lord God is a consuming fire. Yes. Psalm seventy-six, verse three. "There he broke the arrows of the bow, the shield, and the sword of battle." Ah ha, so he breaks everything. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Let's start from verse one. "In Judah God is known." "In Judah God is known; his name is great in Israel." Can you say amen? "In Salem also, is his tabernacle and his dwelling place in Zion." "There he broke the arrows of the bow, the shield, and sword of battle."
You can see that he destroyed all the weapons of the enemy.
Bow, arrow, sword, shield, the whole battle, he destroyed. That's what God wants to do in your life. You are more glorious and excellent than the mountains of prayer.
"You want you, you want you go, at your love, you okay, la, you go go, one, in law."
Hallelujah.
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 Now I want you to pray. Now I want you to pray again. Everything Satan, everything, all my enemies are using to wage war against me. Father, consume them by your fire. In the name of Jesus. Allah destroyed them by fire, destroyed them by fire, destroyed them by fire. "In Jesus' name we pray." In Jesus' name we pray.
Nurokodjesu, niagbadura.
Di de togo togo, somebody sing it, di de tija tija.
Di de tija tija, di de alazara, di de alaruni. Goa, cheroa, wa, fa, come, di de, di de, togo, togo. Di de tija tija, di de alazara, di de alaruni. Goa, cheroa, wa, fa, come, di de, di de, togo, togo. Di de tija tija, di de alazara, di de alaruni. Goa, cheroa, wa, fa, come, di de, oh, di de.
Amen.
Di de tija tija.
Amen.
Di de alazara.
Amen.
Di de alaruni.
Are you not hearing again?
Coming. Di de togo.
Amen.
Ami?
Hallelujah o.
Hallelujah.
All right. Now, you are going to pray. We are still on the same prayer, we are just varying slightly.
Ah, awaluri koko adra ye, akonshi diye diye.
And he saw to, he saw see.
Okay, okay.
Now, now you are going to pray this way.
Ababa i?
Every sickness in my body.
Bogo ai son, nuno agwara me?
Anywhere you are.
If we give it to you lewa.
From the hairs of my head to the soles of my feet.
Lati inori, me titi de atelese me?
Be destroyed by fire in Jesus' name.
Kino ala rokuma pa yuru, nurokodjesu?
Pray that prayer now for yourself.
Badra eh?
Le kassiko, makisakalaba.
Every sickness in my body.
Don't forget to vocalize your prayer.
Mashikba, we lati boma adura esoke o.
You know it's not secret, we are praying the same prayer.
Adra kashonu lajong ba?
Your prayer is not a secret prayer.
Kisha adra i koko, tabi da, eh, kisha adra i koko, adra kashonu lajong ba?
Ah ha, so lift up your voice. Don't pray silent prayer.
Nito ri no, be omo resoke, magba adura, eh, dakke jeje?
Sekere bonde kasta, you ready, we are ready, the apostles raise their voices.
Eh, ti bo, ni ba ta ma apostoli, tabi bo, esoke? Atika, ni ba ta ma apostoli, tabi bo, esoke, nuno adura?
Lift up your voice, everybody.
Nito ri no, ki bogo wa, kia boma adura, wasoke?
Anybody beside you that is not praying loud, tell him, lift up your voice. I authorize you, tell every church member beside you, lift up your voice.
Stop bogo, mo, jotoa legbe re, bogo boma adura, wasoke?
Every church member is authorized to tell the person beside you, lift up your voice.
Stop bogo, entoa legbe re, bogo boma adura?
Jonya share, lati suffer, entoa legbe re, ba, bones, okay, bones, okay. It's not the pastor alone now. It's not only the pastors in the churches. Kisha olu shaguza, toa luri jonye kan, ni koso ben si. Bogo ma jonye, suffer, entoa, ten toa legbe re, ba, tisha, ni uya uya, so, kekbo, adura, esoke? Rakabote, saklabo, mangrobokonde, kastikalibo. Every sickness, anywhere you are in my body, from the hairs of my head to the soles of my feet, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire.
If we give it to you lewa, nuno agwara me?
Be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire. In the name of Jesus, be destroyed by the fire of the Holy Ghost, in the name of Jesus.
Kino, emakuma jonyu, nurokodjesu?
In the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus, in the name of Jesus. Le kestekiri, yekele mendoe, langrabakasto, ori masante, zengelebekendo, costokoro bokusta. Shali ba 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 ba, emajono, emajono, bogo anu, ai san? If we give it to you ba, wa, if we give it to you fara parasi, eh, iti moma po wa ambe, eh, iti mi oti ama po wa ambe? Every sickness, every disease in my body, anywhere you are, anywhere you are hiding. The ones I know is in my body, the one I don't even know is there, be consumed by fire. The fire of your God is against you, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire. Bakilomina sante, sekere mendrebo, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire. Shaklabodo, malika sande, kestekiriya, masoto boya, lakya masante. Be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire, be consumed by fire. Lengelebekesto, zandalama, mangrobokonde, leriba kuste, sekere bonde lebokonde, kandala ba 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 ba. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
What do you see on your screen?
Satan is defeated, is defeatable.
Alaja kilowalo, re screen in yo? Alaja, alaja church. Abere screen.
Satan is defeatable.
Ah ha. What about Bungalo? What can you see on your screen?
Satan is defeatable.
You have echo, why you having echo again? Are you using your phone also on? Satan is defeatable. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
I remember a brother who used to say, eh, ogun, ogun po, oguni, idile oni, onfo go down. And he would look pity, eh, he, he wants you to pity, eh, anyway, maybe he wasn't asking for pity. But he talked with pity, and he looked like his condition was pitiful.
Moroti ala kugoto man so, kya, o, 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 mi epo, gutoja opo, bojenso, onso kelo ika anu? Boya o, o feki, oka anu, unita biu?
He looked like, you can see, he was even pitying himself.
O, 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 lerike, wa, lerike, on, tumka, oka anu arare?
He say, ah, oguni, ogun po.
Boy is marsh.
So ogunja, o, ogun po, lati delay, we delay, delay, eh, boya, eh, delay ba ba, eh, delay, eh, delay, eh, asha, ni ogun po, sha ka, ati ogunja, eh, eh, okay.
What is terrible is?
I want you to know, maybe you are like that, and you are saying, ogun, ogun.
Ni ba feki mo, boya bi wo, shirini ye?
Ha. Satan is defeatable. Satan is defeatable.
Satan is Shebo, ti di, eh, nita bori?
O she, she lati bori eshu.
Okay, she, she, okay. O she, she lati bori eshu.
Satan is defeatable, so why are you crying? Satan is defeatable.
O she, she lati bori eshu.
So why are you crying now? Why are you now crying?
Kilode to be k.
Kilowanki befu. Go there and fight him. Go there and fight him. Somebody help me if he's not hearing again.
Losi be, kolo badja.
Ah ha. Why you say, eh, oguni, ogunja, anyka, anyka, go fight him, he is defeatable.
Lobaja, o she, o she, o she.
O she, she fu, eh, lati bori eh?
O she, she fu, eh, lati bori eh?
But by only one thing.
Tu bo ni pa o kashonu?
By the name of Jesus.
Nurokodjesu.
Ni pa.
Ni pa nurokodjesu?
You have echo, clear your echo before you by the name of Jesus. Alaja church, continue, eh, is echo ata ve koko?
Nurokodjesu.
Only by the name of Jesus.
Ni pa nurokodjesu, ni koni?
Satan is defeatable.
O she, she lati bori satani?
Ah ha, God has given that to the children of men.
Ala onti fele, ifa, one more in yo, one more in yo?
That's right, by or through Jesus Christ.
Ni pa se jesu kristi.
So why you say, eh, assassini, anasini, eh, we, ya burugan, ayenika, eh, that's, inye lombaka kiri, di de koda?
Kilode towa sawi pe, oh, they are being, are being, are being, eh, eh, being bewitched, eh, being charmed.
Ah ha, people are wicked.
Because of the wickedness, the wickedness of people.
Why you complaining?
Why don't you get up and fight?
You can defeat them.
Ole bori re.
If you fight.
Ole bori wa, tobaja.
Not the fight of the flesh.
In shejati, eh, in shejati arau.
For it's the fight of the spirit.
Tu boi jati eh, me?
Witches and wizards are defeatable.
O she, sheki o bori, awa jati osho?
Some people say, ah, awa yenii, eh, on, kapika, on lo be, on lo be, awa ye, kilo be, lugi ma? Iggy, ya nurokodjesu ni, kiche gitia la? We're the grand, to bar, he back down, la la, asha, boche ya we reto?
Awon ya, mi, asha we pe, oh, it's the people of the world, we need to go and appease them. Kilode to, nilo lati lo be, why, eh, kilo lati lo be, awa, eh, oshoati adje?
I was shot at there, why are you begging witches and wizards?
It's them with the rod, and that rod refers to Jesus Christ.
Is the name of Jesus.
Nurokodjesu.
It is, that rod is the name of Jesus.
Oh, ah, ah, igiye, nurokodjesu ni?
There is nothing you can use to defeat witches and wizards except the name of Jesus.
Ose on, konto le fi, eh, bori, awa, oshoati adje, ayafi, nurokodjesu?
Even those who go to Habaliso, they tell us that they have to appease them, they say, I've had that story before. Eh, they say, somebody said, the Habaliso should go and appease witches and wizards.
Awa, ton, ton to, awa, eh, oni, babala ologan, one, onsi, one man sawi pe, awa nilo lati lo she, lati lo be be, moti boteni konso be?
Lati lo be, oshoati adje?
Lati lo be, oshoati adje?
One ya, ayen, ayen, na man pe, wa, wa, lo be wa?
They used to call them the word, that they need to go and appease them.
Ah ha. So wa la, wa lo be, yaga, say they go to appease the old women, they mean old witches.
Wa sawi, okay, wa sawi pe, awa lo be, yaga, yeah, one, two, old two more, say, awa jaga?
The strong ones among them.
Sa?
The strong ones among the witches.
Awatyo la ba la la, me, awa jenye?
You don't need to beg them if you are in Christ. You do not need to beg them if you are in Christ.
Oh, nilo lati lo be wa, ti oba wa, nino kristi?
Take the sword of the spirit.
Mu, eh, ida te me?
Strike them, they will run away.
You of iluwa, wa salo?
Even a madman, as mad as he is.
Eh, iti o ya we re, ba ba, boche ya we reto?
If you, if he sees a stick, he will run.
Tobari, eh?
If they hit him with a stick.
Tobafi, ki, tobafi no?
Tobafu, lugi ma asha, boche ya we reto, ya, asha?
Tobafu, lugi ma, asha? Boche ya we reto ye?
We re ala, oni komama, kwa lugi ma, oma fe re gay?
His insanity do, does not mean he will not know that he was, he's been hit by a rod, he's been flogged.
Ah, fe re gay?
He will flee.
So Satan, witches and wizards, hit them with your stick, with your sword, the sword of the spirit.
Igiluwa, idai me?
Idai me, eh, shaman wa la, wa, asha, we, kini dai me o, oro lo ro? What is the sword of the spirit?
The word of God.
Use it.
Lo?
Satan is defeatable.
O she, she lati bori satani?
Please tell somebody beside you, turn, turn to your right.
Na fu, ne kolebe re?
Satan is defeatable.
O she, she lati bori satani?
Turn to your left, tell the person, Satan is defeatable.
Yes, you see, kosofa eh, ni, eh, o she, she lati bori satani?
Witches and wizards are defeatable.
O she, she lati bori, osoati, oshoati, sati, adje?
Stop being afraid of them, who are they?
Te ku, atima be, atima be ru wa? Tan ni wa?
They are nothing before Jesus.
One, jen koko, niwa ju jesu?
There may be something before other human beings.
One le jen koni, wa ju awa in yo?
Toku.
Ah, wa ju awa in yo, toku?
But before Jesus, they are nothing.
Tu bo, niwa ju jesu, one, jen koko?
When you call the name of Jesus, that name of Jesus, we chase them away from your life.
Ni ba te wa, koro kodjesu, oro kodjesu ye, yo, mu, sa, kuro, nuno ayere?
Yo le wa kuro.
Yo le wa kuro, nuno ayere?
The reason you are having trouble is you are not using the name of Jesus very well.
If iti oti le ma, to, le ni shoroni, iti oba?
Iti, the reason?
Ni shoroni we pe, oh, lo, rukodjesu da ra da ra?
You are not using your weapons very well.
Oh, lo, oh, lo, wi, jare da ra da ra?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
What do you see on your screen?
Demons are defeatable.
Thank you.
Demons are defeatable.
Everybody says.
Demons are defeatable.
Ah ha. You ba eh?
Ole bori, awa, mi o kokon?
Ah ha. Awa me, shonche utama, ya ole bori eh? But, what did I say?
Sugar?
But!
Sugar?
But!
Sugar?
Only by the name of Jesus.
Ni pa se, nurokodjesu?
Okay, okay, I think his echo has gone now, thank you, Sister Tokwe. If he has a problem with his mic, please just come up, don't wait for me to call you. Demons are defeatable.
Ole bori, awa me shu?
They are not something you cannot overcome. O she, she lati bori wa?
O she, she lati bori, awa me shu, o, keshi, ngoti o koli bori?
Ah ha, ah ha. But only by the name of Jesus.
Ni pa se, o, o, rokodjesu ni ka?
Old witches or wizards, eh, the name of Jesus doesn't recognize whether you are an old witch or old wizard.
Ah, je, to ti, pe, tabi to ti?
Obolo boja, eh, obolo bocho, o, rokodjesu, ba, jo, obolo boja, eh, obolo bocho? O rokodjesu, ada eh nu? How's it make a difference to Jesus?
O si ya, o si, o, rokodjesu, be liye?
Hallelujah.
Sorry, hallelujah.
No difference. Hallelujah.
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 What do you see now?
Kilori ba i?
Forces of darkness. Ah ha, oh yeah, read it.
Forces of darkness are defeatable.
No matter where they are coming from.
Oni vishay, bitwa timbo?
Whether from the shrines of idols.
We are lati, oju bo, orisha?
Interpret that to your bar, forces of darkness are defeatable.
Owle bori, bogo, pakipao kokon?
They are conquerable.
O she bori?
O she shago?
O she shago?
Ah, you can conquer them, you can overcome them, they are overcomable.
Ole bori, owle shago wa?
They are defeatable.
O she bori?
Ole luwa la, lubele?
Okay, okay, divi, ole luwa la, lubele?
They are conquerable.
Ole shago wa?
Ah ha. They are overcomable?
O, o, over?
Ole bori wa?
Ole bori wa?
Satanic power is overcomable.
Ole bori, agba satani?
Is conquerable.
Ole shago wa?
Yes.
Beni?
So why are you afraid?
Hallelujah.
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 The Lord is looking at you now from heaven, looking at triumphant church from heaven.
Al- alaun muwa lati onuwa, onuwa jala shekju, Jesu Christi lati onuwa bayi.
Looking at Abekoko Assembly.
Muwa Abekoko?
Looking at Bongalo Assembly.
Joo, Bongalo.
Ah, can you say it clearly please?
Alaun muwa, onuwa joo Abekoko, joo la shekju Jesu Christi Abekoko. Bakano muwa joo la shekju Jesu Christi Bongalo bayi.
He's looking down from heaven also at Alaja Assembly.
Bakano lungo, ekay joti Alaja lati onuwa?
Look at verse nineteen, let's read it again. For he looked down from the height of his sanctuary. From heaven, the Lord viewed the earth. Yoba?
Esse ekokon di logun, ni toli ti oweile, lati oke, dimi morewa. Lati onuwa ni olua boju owaye.
Verse twenty, to hear the groaning of the prisoner. To release those appointed to death.
Esse ogun, lati boi ro lara tubu, lati tuwa wanti anyosi kusile.
Twenty-one, to declare the name of the Lord in Zion and his praise in Jerusalem.
Esse ekokon di logun, lati so ru koluani sioni, ati yere ni Jerusalem.
Hallelujah.
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 So we are going to pray now.
It's all in our God, bye.
We are going to pray for the whole triumphant church first of all. Don't pray for yourself now.
Our God, Bobo, joo, ala shekju Jesu Christi lakoko no, my tibadra fana reba you.
Father.
Baba.
We ask you to look down from heaven.
Ah, so, Abel ekweke uwa lati onuwa?
Eboju ole lati onuwa?
Abel ekweke boju ole lati onuwa?
Look into, at the triumphant church of Jesus Christ.
Eh, wu, joo, ala shekju Jesu Christi.
Abekoko Assembly.
Ekay joti Abekoko.
Bongalo Assembly.
Ekay joti Bongalo.
Alaja Assembly.
Ekay joti Alaja.
We ask you to cancel every appointment of death.
Ah, so ekweke efagile Bobo akosile ekku?
Over anyone's life.
Nudisi, ayee ne, kenne.
Ah, okay.
Nidwa ayee ne, kenne.
Let us pray, let us pray. Look down from heaven. Look down from heaven. Lord.
Baba, boju ole lati onuwa?
Church to you, look down from heaven.
Pi, joo la shekju Jesu Christi.
The triumphant church of Jesus Christ, Abekoko Assembly. Bongalo Assembly, Alaja Assembly. Lord. Cancel every appointment of death from everyone's life. Those who have been appointed to die by Satan, by witches, by wizards. By water spirits, by Mami water spirit, by Obangi spirit, by any idol. By any demonic shrine, father, we cancel the death. We cancel the death in the name of the Lord Jesus. We cancel every appointment of death. Let us decree that we cancel every appointment of death from everyone's life. In the triumphant church, in the name of the Lord Jesus. We cancel every appointment of death from everyone's life in the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus, in the mighty name of Jesus, in the mighty name of Jesus. Le korobobol, Lord, look down from heaven upon every soul in the triumphant church of Jesus Christ. Re kalababa, cancel every appointment of death. Look at these people sitting down. Kilo se te joko, e yite joko ye di de. Eh di de o, e nyara Bongalo to joko. Jotira yini.
Others are sitting down, should stand up now, be on your feet now.
Bongalo, Bongalo, I want to joko eh di de. Ah, ema yole. Emio joko lati batati bere.
I've, I've not been sitting since you started this prayer.
If you are above seventy, Motiso in your heart.
So, but leni ador, you're do, Motisa life wow.
Oh yeah, every appointment of death in everyone's life, vocalize your prayer. This is not silent prayer.
Oh, I do, it's okay, ele gisha, adura, idake jeje, tabi adra kokoo.
Father, we cancel, in the mighty name of Jesus, we cancel every appointment of death. From everyone's life, in the name of Jesus.
In the joy, afagile.
Lengrebe kesto, casti kalibo, ayabaka.
Afagile, pasakba, la jeje, no roko jesu.
Every appointment of death in anyone's life. Abekoko Assembly, Bongalo Assembly, Alaja Assembly, father, we cancel it. We cancel it, we cancel it, we cancel it. In the mighty name of Jesus, we cancel it, we cancel it, we cancel it. In the mighty name of Jesus, le kabo, rekeribo. Every appointment of death set by the enemy. Set by witches and wizards, set by occultic men and women over anyone's life. In the triumphant church of Jesus Christ, we cancel them all, in the mighty name of Jesus. We destroy it, we destroy it, we destroy it, in the mighty name of Jesus. In the mighty name of Jesus, in the mighty name of Jesus. Thank you, Father. Le kisakere, lengrebe kesto, ze ki alimosunte, yandelabe kendo. Lengro boko konde, kandelabe kesto.
Bye, big cancel.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen, no roko jesu, na badra.
In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen, no roko jesu, na badra.
Say thank you, Jesus, thank you, Lord, clap your hands, thank you, Father, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Now, we are going to cancel every agreement to die.
Ni ba afagile Bobo, ifo, shoko kon, lati ku?
No, some people, it's the enemy that set appointments, we have canceled that one.
Ah, talo.
I want to, I want to show a girl, talo sha de, we kulu ri, hello me, onfora, no lo sha de, we kou makumba, bye.
There are some, they agree to die at a, at a particular time.
Everyone who has agreed to die before his time.
For shoko kon, lati ku, koto to akoko re.
We cancel that agreement, it will not work.
Afagile, ifo, shoko kon, oye, no roko jesu.
Ah, Bobo, ah, de, we kute ni keniti, lo she, we lu, emio kokon, afagile, no roko jesu, oh yeah, father? Look at triumphant church, Abekoko Assembly, Bongalo Assembly. Anyone who has agreed to die, we cancel the death. We decree you will not die, you will live. You will live to serve God to a good old age, in the name of Jesus.
Oh jesu.
You live to know God and be a true disciple of Christ. And serve the living God to a good old age. In the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus. In the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Le koseketeria, zangolo bokunde, lengra bakasta, kaliba bobosh, shakala makante. Elebebe nderibo, bakisto, makista, kalinda, alindoro boshande. Thank you, Father, thank you, Father, thank you, Father. Every agreement to die that anyone has made. With forces of darkness, with witches, wizard, with water spirit, with Obangi, we nullify them. We disannold them, we cancel them in the name of the Lord Jesus. In the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Thank you, Father, thank you, Father, thank you, Father, thank you, Father. Le kisteri, we decree, over your life, you will live, you will not die. In the name of Jesus, sacred bond area, in Jesus' name we pray.
No roko jesu, na badra, amen?
In Jesus' mighty name we have prayed.
Amen, no roko la jesu, na badra, amen?
Shout, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah.
Shout, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah, hallelujah.
Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord, thank you, Lord.
Hallelujah, hallelujah, shen jesu, hallelujah.
Amen.
Amen.
Put your right hand on your head now.
Yo, what, to leli, re.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
All right, hold on, hold on, let's do something before we do that. Put down your hand. Now pray. That prayer, we have prayed for everybody, pray it for yourself. That same prayer, we just pray for the whole church, pray it for your own life.
Afa yea lare, da fa lare.
Every appointment of death over my life, by whosoever, I cancel them in Jesus' name.
Afagile, afagile.
Every appointment of death that the enemy has made, that witches and wizards have made. That occultic men and women have made. That idol spirits have made, that demons, water spirits, Obangi or whatever, that they have made over my life. I cancel them in Jesus' name. Cancel them from my life, from my children's lives, in the name of the Lord Jesus. From the life of my spouse, in the name of the Lord Jesus. Le kasekerobo, every appointment of death, any enemy has made over my life to terminate my life, I cancel them. By the blood of Jesus, I destroy them, I destroy them, I destroy them. In the mighty name of Jesus. I destroy them in the mighty name of Jesus. E kisaki lamino, kandala balaboste. Lengrebe keste, keste karibo, kustakala masante. Thank you, Father. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen, no roko jesu, na badra, amen?
Amen and amen.
Amen, amen and si, amen.
Put your right hand on your head now.
Ni ba, for what, to le, liu liu, re ba.
Father, I pray for everyone hearing my voice. Father, I pray for everyone hearing my voice.
Baba, daf, baba, onti man, baba, omi.
I pray for everyone in the triumphant church of Jesus Christ.
Baba, daf, no lukulu kuwa, onuwa, to wa ni nu joo, ala shekju Jesu Christi.
Atabekoko Assembly.
Eh, ekay joti Abekoko.
Bongalo Assembly.
Joo ti Bongalo.
Alaja Assembly.
Ekay joti Alaja.
I cancel every appointment of death in Jesus' name.
Eh, ma, mo afagile Bobo, ifo, shoko kon, ti ku, no de.
Oka ade, we kuu, I cancel them in Jesus' name. Every appointment of death.
Ba, de, we kuu?
That the enemy has made.
Yeah, that is she.
Over anyone's life in the triumphant church of Jesus Christ.
Gloria yee ne, ken, ni ju, ala shekju Jesu Christi.
Atabekoko Assembly.
Eh, ekay joo Abekoko.
Bongalo Assembly, Alaja Assembly. Father, I cancel them in Jesus' name.
No roko jesu.
I decree, over your life, everyone hearing this sound of my voice. You will live, you will not die.
Wala, you wa, yoku.
In the name of Jesus.
No roko jesu.
You will live to a good old age.
Wala, you ju, go ti o dara.
Serving Jesus Christ in the land of the living in Jesus' name.
Wala, no roko jesu.
In the name of Jesus.
No roko jesu.
Thank you, holy Father.
Ashimba, amima.
Anyone who has gone to make agreement with demons to die.
And again, to ti lo, ifo, shoko kon, we lu, emio kokon, lati ku?
I cancel the appointment, the agreement in Jesus' name.
Afagile, un, tabi, ifo, shoko kon, oye, no roko jesu.
I cancel it by the blood of Jesus in Jesus' name.
Afagile, no roko jesu.
I decree over your life, you will live, you will not die, in Jesus' name.
Wala, you wa, yoku.
I decree you will live, you will not die in Jesus' name.
Wala, you wa, yoku, no roko jesu.
You live to a good old age, serving Jesus Christ. In the land of the living, in Jesus' name.
No roko jesu.
Thank you, our Father and our God.
Baba wa, asuluwa wa.
Thank you, holy Father.
Ashimba, amima.
In Jesus' name I pray.
No roko jesu, mukbadra.
In Jesus' name I pray.
No roko jesu, mukba.
In Jesus' name I pray.
No roko jesu, mukbadra.
Amen.
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 Shout, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah.
Shout, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah, eh, hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah.
Shout, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah.
Shout, the triumphant, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah, ala shekju.
Shout, the triumphant, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah, si, awala.
Shout, the triumphant, hallelujah.
Eh, hallelujah, si, awala, shekju, hallelujah, 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 hallelujah.
Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Lord, hallelujah. Amen and amen.
Hallelujah.
Amen and amen.
Amen, ati, amen.
All right, sit down for a moment.
Ekay joo kofui ba dien.
Hallelujah.
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 God wants you to prosper in your finances. God wants you to prosper in your finances.
Alaun veki o she, reni nu, eto, ishuno, wo re.
He doesn't want you to be poor.
Veki o je ta laka.
Poverty is not the will of God.
Ah, o she gishy, ife ala nu.
Lack and want is not the will of God.
Ane, koto, gishy, ife ala nu.
God wants you to enjoy his abundance.
Alaun veki o badu, opoyantu re.
And he has made provisions for that to happen in your life.
Otis, otis ti kesi, fele, kiuli wasi, musha ni na yure.
But you have to cooperate with God.
Shiba, wa, bado, fe waso, okoke, lu ala nu.
By being the business God has authorized for you.
Ni ba, we wa ni nu, oku, ote ala ti, af, pashe, fo, kiu, ma she.
Toti nyaa, fo.
Ni ba, we wa ni mu, ote ala ti, yo, fo mu, wa lati ma she.
Ah, those who study, ah, human behavior, human life.
Ah, tokka kolori, ishe siati wa, iwa inio.
They have said every human being is different from another one.
Oni, in yo kokon, ay, onya to siaramo.
You can even know.
You can.
You can know that yourself.
Ole, ole, moele fara re.
You look at the lines in your hands.
Wo in la wo re.
You can't find anybody's hand that will have that, those same lines.
Okoni, ri, en, gen ti la wo ti, retuma ba ti la wo ti re mu.
So, if you do something, your friend may do a business and succeed.
Ah, da, re le, yoku, kosi, shashyori.
You may do it and fail.
Wale shekosi kuno.
Because it's not for you.
So, we gishy, fo.
So you are not a failure, you are only going to a wrong place.
Ni dono, shekosi kuno, ju, ba, ni biton, lo ye, ibeni, ko ye.
You are not in the right business.
Oku wa, ni nu, oku, ote ye, fo.
You can't even know that, it's easy to know that, where, where we were in school, you know, some boys are very good in mathematics, can't you remember?
Hold on, lati mo, no ti bata wa, ni le we, grandma.
In history.
I call ah, from my, ah.
Itan, I make it an history.
It's not only from my, it's on dollar dollar.
You know, there's a subject called history. They, they are, somebody said they cancel it. They don't need, they should put it back. History is important too.
I want eh.
So, a conic by itan, history.
Okay. A conic by iton.
Some people are very good at that.
I come more early, dollar dollar.
There is a gift in your life.
Eh, but go away, you know, here eh.
Somebody can be, can go into something like engineering and be very wonderful.
And call eh, los, you know, eh, call, eh, more error, cause he, my shit, dollar, nbe.
And grow up and have a lot of money.
Also, the dark one, you know, eh, cool, ah, ni opolo, oh, whoa.
Somebody may not have the brain for engineering.
Call him, ah, ni opolo, phone eh, eh, more, error.
If he wants to be an engineer, he will continue to fail there.
Only, lots of beer, go, kuno.
To ba lo, first, she engineer, oh, mama, kuna, lombeni, because he's going to where God didn't prepare for him.
The one, lots of biti, ki, she, talon, who is it, hmm, so she do fun.
But maybe he's an artist.
Boyah.
He can draw, he can make designs, he can do sculptures and things like that. Now, if he stays there, he will have the same money the engineer we have. He won't be poorer. He won't have less money.
But you say, he, ah, ah, who, eh, oh, he, ah, who, eh.
Ah, be, ah, be on tank, when he art, he shall run, he, ah, he, ah, he, check, come, be. Art, design, to ba joke, oh, tea, oh, what, oh, marine, eh, on, go, only, do, it, engineer, marine, eh. So, oh, look, ah, look, oh, am, biti, oh, Lord, oh, phone, near, before, now, I want you to pray. Father in heaven.
Amen.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
There is nobody without a gift in his life.
Oh, say, again, ti, ko, near, but, come, you know, here eh.
People fail when they don't operate in the area of gifts.
Oh, eh, young, kuno, ni, but, you know, oh, vash, eh, you know, eh, but, yeah, TV, fun, oh.
The area of God has given them.
Near, but, tell on, TV, fun, oh.
Now, I want you to pray.
You, I'm, very, you, bad, right?
Father in heaven.
Baba, ni, oh, eh.
Help me to discover my gifts.
Eh, Romina, la, teach, ah, worry, eh, boom, me.
And operate in the area of my gifts.
In, see, my, she, you know, eh, but, yeah, TV, for me.
Direct me to the business I'm gifted for, in Jesus' name. Pray.
Eh, darling, you see, no, oh, co, oh, tea, eh, TV, level, la, teach, eh, eh, god, bad, right?
Direct me to the business I'm gifted for, to the career, not only business, can be career. It's not compulsory, doing business.
Oh, but, ah, be, she, ah, she, la, eh, TV, for me.
Direct me to the business you have gifted me for, in Jesus' name.
Ah, but, eh, darling, you see, no, eh, boom, eh. For, she, ah, she, la, TV, for me, eh, boom, la, teach, ah, she, you're, in, you, eh.
Help, if I don't know it, help me to know it, in Jesus' name.
Eh, think, oh, bamo, eh, Romina, la, TV, more, Lord, God, yes.
Because it is when you know it, that's when your prosperity will begin.
So, you, but, oh, bamo, ni, eh, eh, ah, she, you're, eh, go, bear eh.
Say, keribo, konde, you are, you are operating where you don't have gifts.
Oh, she, she, eh, biti, we, continue, eh, before.
The labor will not show.
He, she, he, she, eh, she, eh, taku, taku, eh, 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 huh.
Because you don't have gifts there.
So, you, go, eh, before.
Lord, show me, direct me to the business or career you, I'm gifted for, in Jesus' name. Pray, pray.
Eh, 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 darling, you see, no, eh, eh.
Oh, co, what, ah, be, she, ah, she, la, eh, TV, for me, eh, boom, la, teach, ah, she, you're, in, you, eh. In Jesus' name. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Your God, yes, you know, bad, right?
Power to prosper financially.
Ah, but, la, teach, ah, she, you're, eh, party, to, you know, who.
Father, point upon me from heaven. Pray, pray.
Ah, darling, you know, that, oh, eh.
Le, kasikori, kastikali, mo, sande, le, men, gray, lengoro, bo, konde, lengori, bo, kuste, okirama, sande. Open your Bible to Psalms twenty-three.
She, eh, you see, we, Sam, or, you, get, ah, the logo.
Psalms twenty-three. The Lord is my shepherd. I shall not want. I will not lack any good thing. God doesn't want you to lack anything good. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. Somebody read your ruba for me.
Sam, oh, he, get, ah, the logo, eh, say, Kini, oh, Luwani, oh, Lu, Shag, oh, Tomi, eh, me, ki, yo, shaline.
Make sure you understand what the spirit is saying there.
Read, that, you, oh, new, you, un, see, eh, me, son, you, eh, oh.
The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want.
Oh, Luwani, oh, Lu, Shag, oh, Tomi, eh, me, ki, yo, shaline.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Now, God doesn't want you to lack anything.
Allah, with, Allah, oh, with, ki, oh, shaline, oh, come.
Say, the Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want.
Oh, Luwani, oh, Lu, Shag, oh, Tomi, eh, me, ki, yo, shaline.
That's the will of God for you.
If, Allah, oh, phone, eh, yeah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Say it, the Lord is my shepherd. Say it, la.
So, oh, Luwani, so, oh, Luwani, Shag, oh, Tomi.
I shall not lack any good thing.
Eh, me, ki, yo, shaline.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
That's the will of God for you.
If, Allah, oh, phone, eh, yeah.
He doesn't want you to lack anything good.
Like, oh, shaline, oh, oh, come, oh, to, da, ra.
He wants you to have more than enough.
Over, ki, you, eh, I, need, so, ah, to, ah, the, she, eh.
The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. Say it again.
My Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want.
I will not lack any good thing. Your ba.
Oh, Luwani, oh, Lu, Shag, oh, Tomi, eh, me, ki, yo, shaline, you, to, da, ra.
First two, he makes me to lie down in green pastures, he leads me beside the seawater. Say it, everybody in English.
Let me to lie down in green pastures, he leads me beside the seawaters.
Oh, yeah, your ba, Baba, me, ka, your ba.
Eh, say, KJ, oh, mummy, dubule, eh, no, papa, oh, kotutu, oh, mummy, lots of, eh, oh, me, di, di, da, ke, ro, ro.
Now, say it, oh, oh, Luwani, mummy, dubule, eh, no, papa, oh, kotutu, we, eh. Papa, oh, kotutu, oh, who, Nini.
Papa, oh, kotutu, oh, who, Nini.
Papa, oh, kotutu, Nini, oh, merre, merre, to, da, ra, Bobo.
Papa, oh, kotutu, Nini, oh, merre, merre, to, da, ra, Bobo.
Ni, oh,鲁哥杰苏.
Ni, oh,鲁哥杰苏.
Papa, oh, kotutu, ah, ni, to, ah, to, ah, the, she, eh.
Papa, oh, kotutu, ah, ni, to, ah, to, ah, the, she, eh.
Ni, oh,鲁哥杰苏, te, mini.
Oh,鲁哥杰苏, te, mini.
Green pastures of m- m- money. Say it.
Green pastures of money.
Green pastures of abundance.
Green pastures of abundance.
Green pastures of having all the good things of life.
Green pastures of having all good things of life.
They are mine, in Jesus' name.
They are mine, in Jesus' name.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
He restores my soul. He leads me in the path of righteousness for His name's sake. Yoba? Eh, say, Keta.
Eh, say, Keta, oh, to, ah, come, me, Lara, oh, mummy, Lord, eh, eh, oh, do, do, need, oh, you, oh,鲁哥, eh.
Yeah, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I fear no evil, for thou art with me. Your rod and your staff, they comfort me. Eh, say, Kerry.
Eh, say, Kerry. Need, oh, to, be, most, eh, learning, eh, learning, ah, for, eh, for, gee, oh, gee, gee, who, eh, me, ki, yo, bear, eh, be, come, need, oh, you, see, who, eh, well, um, eh, oh, go, eh, ah, to, eh, one, two, many, no.
Read it one more time.
Need, oh, to, be, most, eh, learning, eh, learning, ah, for, eh, for, gee, oh, gee, gee, who.
Oh, oh, gee, gee, hold on. The killer, eh, when, eh, eh, lawyer, oh, gee, gee, ah, be, ah, on, do, ni, kalom, eh, 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 eh.
Oh, gee, gee.
Oh, gee, gee.
Oh, gee, gee, who.
Shadow.
Oh, gee, gee.
Shadow is oh, gee, gee, not oh, gee, gee. Oh, gee, gee, is sardini, eh? Ah, be, ba, oh, let, eh, eh, lawyer, eh.
Oh, gee, gee, who, oh, gee, gee, who.
Oh, gee, gee, eh, oh, gee, gee, sardino, oh, gee, gee, is shadow.
Oh, gee, gee, oh, gee, gee, ne, sardine, oh, gee, gee.
Uh-uh, wait. Oh, gee, gee, yes, sardini, oh, gee, gee, is shadow. Oh, yeah.
Need, oh, to, be, most, eh, learning, eh, learning, ah, for, eh, for, gee, oh, gee, gee, who.
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah.
Eh, me, ki, yo, bear, who, eh, be, come, need, oh, you, see, who, eh, well, um, eh, oh, go, eh, ah, to, eh, one, two, many, no.
You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil, my cup runs over.
Eh, say, Karo, eh, wa, ta, ta, billion, just, eh, eh, you, eh, me, ni, oh, you, ah, want, eh, me, eh, wa, da, oh, Rosi, many, you're, eh, ah, go, missy, come, ah, who, was, eh, eh.
Now, let's pray. Lord, make me to lie down in green pastures, green pastures of m- money, of good money, abundance of money, abundance of all good things of life. Prepare a table before me. What kind of table of abundance, prepare before me a table of abundance of blessings, in the presence of my enemies. So, you have prayed that prayer for yourself.
Eh, they, ta, be, the, she, eh, eh, you, eh, me, oh, you, ah, want, eh, me.
Ta, Billy, ah, ni, to, ah, to, ah, the, she, eh. Ta, Billy, oh, ko, lock, boy, book, oh, eh, eh, oh, Luwani, eh, eh, she, eh, eh, you, eh, me, need, oh, you, ah, want, eh, me. Oh, you, eh, ti, one, you, oh,鲁哥杰苏. Anoint my head with oil, oil of your blessing. Let my cup be running over. Oh, oh, eh, book, oh, yeah, da, eh, milori, ah, go, book, oh, me, kokon, ah, who, was, eh, 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 le, ki, saketo, ma, yee, katande, alima, so, to, Boria, zangram, eh, konde, lengale, eh, be, kuste, le, ki, Rama. La, ki, Rama, no, coste, ah, go, eh, book, oh, me, de, kokon, ah, who, was, eh, eh. Oh, Luwani, eh, eh, be, oh, eh, mummy, dubule, eh, no, papa, oh, kotutu, papa, oh, kotutu, ah, ni, to, ah, to, the, she, eh, oh, who, ah, ni, to, ah, to, the, she, eh, oh, merre, merre, Bobo, in the name of Jesus. Ta, Billy, ah, ni, to, ah, to, the, she, eh, who, eh, question, eh, she, eh, eh, you, eh, me, lot, you, ah, want, eh, me, do, you, ti, Bobo, ah, want, eh, eh, be, see, eh, eh, me, you, oh,鲁哥杰苏, you, oh,鲁哥杰苏. Le, karab, oh, coste, who is in the front seat at Tabekoko? Why is that person sitting? What's going on? Is he praying? Or, what's he doing? That's a delega. What are you doing? Make sure you are praying. Le, ki, saketo, ye, ki, Rama, la, ba, kanda, la, masote, zengale, eh, be, keto, or, eh, ba, sha, ke, Taria, alibobo, sakataya. You have to lie down in green pastures of money, of all good things of life. Prepare a table before me, table of abundance and of all good things of life, the presence of my enemies. Exalt my heart with honor. Put my enemies to shame, in my finances, in my career, in my professional practice. Put my enemies to shame. Exalt my heart with honor. Take me to higher grounds in my finances. No matter what's happening in Nigeria, the law can provide for you. Oh, the, biti, oh, to, she, eh, Nigeria, oh, long, she, eh, question, eh, for. He's a God of abundance, sacred bondi, kastikali, mashikata, alaboboria, makilabi, Sante, alima, Santere, lengre, be, kute. Thank you, Father. Thank you, Father. Akalidoya, Makasta, Maki, Saketera, Mazenteria, Alimo, Zontoya. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen. Your God, yes, you know, bad, right?
Father, I pray for everyone hearing my voice.
Ah, but, ah, Boba, oh, Tom, boom, eh.
Power to prosper financially.
Ah, but, la, teach, ah, she, eh, eh, party, to, you know, who.
Lord, point upon them, in Jesus' name.
Yeah, darling, oh, Lord, Lord, God, yes.
Wisdom, to know what business to do and prosper.
Oh, but, la, TV, more, oh, tea, oh, you, eh, to, oh, she, eh, eh.
Lord, point upon their heads, in Jesus' name.
Eh, yeah, darling, oh, Lord, Lord, God, yes.
Point upon their lives, in Jesus' name.
Yeah, as soon as you, oh, Lord, God, yes.
Thank you, holy Father.
Eh, she, Baba, me, ma.
Enlarge their cause, in Jesus' name.
Eh, say, good, one, eh, la, oh, God, yes.
Lock and one, take it away from everyone's life, everyone hearing my voice now, in Jesus' name.
Eh, mukon, eh, you, ah, Tom, go, eh, eh, Lord, God, yes.
Bless your people with abundance, in Jesus' name.
Eh, but, go, eh, you, eh, eh, Lord, God, yes.
Thank you, holy Father.
Eh, she, Baba, me, ma.
A table of abundant blessings.
Ta, Billy, oh, for, eh, 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 book, oh, for, eh, eh.
Prepare it before them, in the presence of their enemies, and put their enemies to shame, in Jesus' name.
Ah, Billy, oh, for, eh, 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 you, eh, eh, God, yes, eh, so, you, eh, eh, God, yes.
Thank you, my Father.
Eh, she, Baba, me.
Thank you, my Father.
Eh, she, Baba, me.
In Jesus' name, I pray.
Your God, yes, you know, bad, right?
In Jesus' name, I pray.
God, yes, you know, bad, right?
Clap your hands, say, thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord.
Ah, thank you, Jesus.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Amen.
Amen.
Now, let's pray one more prayer. I think after that, I think I'll let you go.
Eh, god, bad, right, consider, eh, 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 eh.
Anything that can cause a medical emergency.
Oh, go, to, eh, fa, you, eh, see, eh, oh, so, no, gee, gee.
Father, cast it out of my life, in Jesus' name.
Bad, eh, eh, come, eh, eh, me, Lord, God, yes.
I cast it out of my body, I cast it out of my life, in Jesus' name.
Oh, go, to, eh, fa, you, eh, see, eh, oh, so, no, gee, gee.
Anything that can cause a medical emergency, I reject it.
Oh, eh, fa, you, eh, see, eh, oh, so, no, gee, gee, mo, mo, go, mo, go.
I cast it out of my life.
Bad, eh, eh, come, eh, eh, me.
In the name of Jesus.
Lord, God, yes.
Pray.
Bad, right?
Anything that can cause medical emergency, my life.
Oh, go, to, eh, fa, you, eh, see, eh, oh, eh, so, no, gee, gee.
In, eh, what are you saying?
Oh, go, to, eh, oh, go, to, eh, fa, you, eh, see, eh, oh, so, no, gee, gee.
I cast it out of my life, in Jesus' name.
Oh, bad, eh, eh, come, eh, eh, Lord, God, yes.
Le, kasi, korobo, langra, bakando, lengro, bo, kokon, eh, caste, ze, kerabo, le, ki, sakete, be, ki, sakala, mando. Lengre, eh, anything that can cause me, any plan of Satan to attack my heart, let's pray it like that.
Oh, oh, go, to, Satan, eh, la, ti, call, eh, ah, oh, come, eh.
My heart.
Go, to, Satan.
Ah, be.
Oh, go, to, Satan, eh, 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 heart, eh, yoba. Oh, come, no, eh, eh.
Oh, yeah, eh, eh, oh, come, eh, eh, oh, yeah.
Oh, go, to, Satan, eh, eh.
Solo, me, oh, eh, oh, come, eh.
I know, I know, I know, sir.
Oh, come, eh, 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 sorry, he, eh, solo. Ah, ah, the heart, organ that pumps blood.
Oh, come, to, eh, 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 okay.
Eh. Come, who, so, okay.
Eh, yeah, eh, 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 eh.
Rinca, kiri, agwa, eh, eh.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Come, who, eh, yes, okay, eh, 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 Lord, God, yes.
Ami. Oh, go, go, to, mu, ke, eh, eh, lo, ka, kiri, agwa, eh, eh.
Oh, come.